Hi, everybody. This is Patrick McCarthy reporting with Tri-Cities Community Television for our municipal update for 2022. Election Day, of course, is October 15, and we are on the unceded territory of the Kuaquitlam First Nations, and I want to thank them for allowing us to volunteer and do the work we do here on Tri-Cities Community Television on their space. Today, we have a councillor from the city of Kuaquitlam, councillor Terry Towner. Welcome to the show. And first of all, thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having me.
I think the last time we interviewed you, you were doing your kind of run every street or something. I said, well, you could just jump into one of those garbage trucks and ride every street. So that's what I would have done. So tell us, tell us what's happened the last four, this last four years and kind of how COVID, I think, as a councilperson has kind of impacted you or even the city itself.
What I would say we got out of COVID is you really learn when you need to be resilient, when you have to be responsive. Kind of, I've learned that we have to learn to expect the unexpected, be prepared, know how to pivot. Those sound like all the buzzwords that we were using, but we really, truly had to reprioritise what our residents needed. And I'm actually really proud of the way we did it. We were one of the first municipalities to start reopening up the facilities in a very, you know, COVID-friendly way, but when we were given the green light too. And our community response support programme, you know, really helped out the non-profits and the more vulnerable populations in our city. And then we were recognised with an award from the UBCM in our community response. But I just, it really emphasised to me that, you know, we're all just doing our thing, trying to make the world a better place, and we have to work together to support each other. We weren't all in it together. Everybody, we were all in it, but everybody's, what's that expression? You know, we're in the same boat, but some people's boats, you know, had holes and they were leaking, or they only had one, or whatever that analogy is, sorry, I can't remember it. But it really, really emphasised to me that we get more done when we support each other, work together, and just overcome the obstacles when they come our way.
Yeah. So help is there? I know, I know, you know, for myself, you know, when you have your, your day job and you've got, you know, the sort of COVID comes and they say, okay, tomorrow to get your test or you can't go to work today or something, and that pivot. As a councilwoman, what did, what was that first, you know, first thought when all of a sudden you thought, oh crap, you know, this is going to change my world for, for you personally, but for the city? I'm just curious that, you know, did you get a call from, from the mayor or did you guys all show up and do a Zoom call? I mean, just a kind of sense of how that kind of went from zero to 100 really quickly?
It did happen very quickly, and I was just coming out of surgery, so I was recovering and it all, everything shut down. But I don't really think I focused too much on myself. I focused on who I could help and who I could reach out to, the vulnerable people in my family, in my neighbourhood, the residents, and what can I do to help whoever needs it get through this.
So, you know, the city's changing, so we know there's a lot more people moving into Kuaquitlam or even this region. So for folks who are new to this area and may not know who you are, even though they may see your name on council, like, just give us a sense of who you are and what you stand for, that would, that would be appreciated for those new folks in town.
Okay, well, I was born and raised in Burnaby, not too far from here, but I say that I've lived my entire adult life in Kuaquitlam. And I've always, always, since I was a teenager, wanted to be part of the solution. I've always been action-oriented. I've always had lots of energy and never been one to sit in front of the TV. So I was always out in my community, trying to make a difference. Then I had an amazing career in a, in a corporate role in human resources for 17 years, and I got reorganised out of it, out of that role. And, and then an opportunity came that I didn't see to run in a by-election back in 2013. Two of the female councillors became MLAs, so there was two seats. And I was approached by people in the community to run on council, to, you know, represent people. And I, at first, I said, no, I'm not a politician. But then I realised I love to serve my community. So I ran in 2013, didn't get elected, but I realised I loved talking to people on the doorsteps and hearing what their concerns were, hearing what their issues were, and learning about what we could do, what the city could do to help.
So you don't, so I guess you're a person that doesn't like to, it sounds like you're very, you have a very, you kind of can't sit still too long.
Well, I was approached to run, and I was like, I'm not a politician, right? And then I was encouraged enough that I ran, and I loved, I loved hearing from the residents in Kuaquitlam. And then I tried again in 2014, and it truly has been my honour and my privilege to be a city councillor for the last two terms. And I'm actually really proud of some of the stuff. I'm proud on numerous levels, the big picture level as far as Kuaquitlam staff, Kuaquitlam management, Kuaquitlam council, some of the things that we've accomplished and overcome in my two terms on council. But I'm also quite proud of some of the initiatives that I've spearheaded and the things I've accomplished as a city councillor during my time on council.
And those would be?
Well, just recently...
You've got me interested. I just, I saw you lay it out for me and I responded.
A couple of examples? Just recently, I mean, I just said I like to take action and be solutions-oriented. I was scrolling Instagram earlier this year, maybe last year, and I saw a post by our Kuaquitlam firefighters that they were fighting a residential fire just over here, and during the active fire scene, a resident drove over the fire hose that was filled with water. And because of the pressure, it damaged the fire hose, put holes in it, and of course, stopped working, which is a major safety issue, and it damaged the hose. So, one, unnecessary tax dollars spent to replace the hose, but two, driving over a fire hose can have catastrophic consequences. Not only if, what if it cuts the water supply off right when the firefighter is putting out a fire and there's a, someone in the structure right there, and all of a sudden the fire is cut off? Or what if it's laying down and the fire starts, the hose starts to fly around and it's got the coupling on and it hits someone? So anyways, I thought, that's wrong. And the violation in the Motor Vehicle Act for that is $76 or something, whereas picking, touching your phone out of a train is 368, but the level of catastrophic consequences doesn't even compare. So just last week up at UBCM, I'd put a motion forward to ask the province to look at the Motor Vehicle Act to make that more severe, because I did some research, and that happens in other municipalities. People just drive through fire scenes and drive over the hoses. So I really think we could do a better part in making the public aware, please don't drive over fire hoses when they're in use, but also by upping the fine so people realise that that can have catastrophic consequences. Another, another thing that I'm happy about as a resident, so some parts of our city getting more populated, getting denser.
Is that a good thing?
Well, yes, and yes, we do need more housing. We, I've talked to our Minister of Federal Immigration, and yeah, immigration numbers are huge. There's hundreds and hundreds of thousands of people coming to Canada. There's a bottleneck or a retroactive amount of people coming because of the pause during the COVID. And it's good that people are living longer, but I also read an interesting report that fewer people are getting married. So whereby in the past, maybe those two people would have been one house, now they're two, and things like that. So our need for housing is drastically increasing, and we have to meet that supply. So yes, it's a good thing because we need housing and we need people to work, and it's good that people are living longer. But it is a challenge to address these housing needs and balance preserving and respecting what's here now, preserving the character of our neighbourhoods and our tree canopy and having enough amenities and all that kind of stuff. So it is a challenge, but just back to the whole dense neighbourhood thing and we all have to live together. There was a tenant, a lot of houses have secondary suites, which again is good, it's mortgage helper, helps affordability and provides rental for people who need rental. But a lot of landlords don't let their tenants smoke inside their suite. And what this one group of residents was finding is there was a couple of tenants that would sit in their car in the cul-de-sac for hours on end and smoke in their car, but they would idle. And then meanwhile, the windows are open and the kids are playing and they're breathing in all this exhaust. And so I looked into it and we didn't have a bylaw for idling. And then I found out that there's a whole bunch of idling issues that happen in our city. Some idling is necessary, sitting in traffic during an emergency, things like that. But there was a lot of idling going on that was affecting the quality of life of the people that had to breathe it in, and it wasn't necessary. And so I had an anti-idling bylaw supported by council and implemented this year. So it doesn't mean that we drive around the city with a stopwatch, you know, looking for people with their cars running when they're not moving. What it means is bringing awareness, please don't use your cars to, and also, when I was running every street during the pandemic, I saw a lot of cars sitting with no human inside them with, with running. In the winter, people would leave the car running while they ran errands to keep the car warm.
Yeah, or cool.
And, and in the summer, they would keep it running to keep it cool, right? I saw that a lot, and I see it at Comal Lake Village, people leave their cars running. That's one thing if they're EVs, but if they're regular vehicles and they're spewing exhaust and you're doing a 20-minute shopping errand, everybody else has to breathe that in. So I could give you other examples too, but I just like to look at the reason and, and try to see if we can make the world a little more livable for everybody else that we're sharing it with.
Well, I wouldn't, like I said, I mean, running every street, I was being a bit flippant. I mean, I mean, like I said, you could jump on a garbage truck and drive every street, but I think the, you know, the idea of seeing every street is probably the more important part of just ground level and sort of seeing what's happening in the community, so.
Can I add on that?
Sure, you can.
I only, I started running every street for my own personal health reasons. I love to run.
I should do that.
I love to run. You have to love to run though. And there was a woman in Poco that did it, all Poco streets. She couldn't go run the marathon because of COVID, and it inspired me. So I thought, I should run Kuaquitlam. And I completely embarked on that challenge to run every metre of every street in Kuaquitlam just for my own personal, my own personal challenge. However, I couldn't seem to take off my city councillor hat. And while I was running, I did notice illegal dumping, lighting issues, visibility issues, parking challenges, signage that could be improved, all sorts of things like that. And I brought those concerns back to the council table or to our engineering and public works department, and I had quite a few things fixed. And even though that wasn't my goal, to go out there and do it for that, again, I like to, I like to be solutions-oriented from the, from the angle of serving the public. And it's, it's good to make change happen and be part of positive change, even if they're just little things.
Yeah, I think if I was in charge of engineering, I'd find out what your route is and have a team moving ahead of you the day before, just to...
I kept it random.
Put plastic flowers in the right places and smiling, people waving at you.
Totally, yeah.
Yeah, I would have done that. But so, so one of the big challenges is affordable housing, you know? We, we know that Kuaquitlam received good, good sort of, you know, a tip of the hat from the UBCM, but just really, what would you say to those young folks who, whose parents are probably sold their place and about to leave Kuaquitlam or kicking them out because of whatever reason? But, but they're, you know, they're 75,000, they always say is the mean average, you know, 30% of your income should be for that. So what do you say to a young couple, a young person who wants to live in Kuaquitlam and is feeling that they can't?
I know, it's a challenge. I have a 20-year-old and an 18-year-old. I would love for them to be able to stay in Kuaquitlam. So I'm hoping that with increasing supply, the price will come down. I mean, I've heard stories that, you know, someone advertises their unit for rent and they get 500 interested parties in a, in a weekend.
Right.
That wants to rent their unit. So they take the post down, add $800 a month to the rent and put it back up, and now they only get 250 interested people. So when there's not enough supply, price goes up. And I know that's very simplistic. I'm hoping that with the, with Skytrain coming to Kuaquitlam and us densifying around the Skytrain corridors, supply will increase. But it just, it kills me that people of regular means may not be able to stay in Kuaquitlam or never own. So we have to keep being creative with our land use. Yes, we have to have neighbourhoods that are single-family. We have to have neighbourhoods that are large single-family with big yards, because there is a segment of the population that wants that. But there are many neighbourhoods that we could use the land a lot better. It's close to transit, it's, people don't even need to have a car. That helps with affordability. If we can build housing within walking to rapid transit so people can save that $10,000 or $12,000 a year not having a car, put lots of car-share programmes in the area, e-mobility and make it really easy to get around without a car and live in a transit-oriented area. That's one way to stay. But we have to keep increasing rental. We have to keep increasing units for seniors to downsize into. We have to have good policies for landlords so they don't pull out of the rental market. That's an unintended consequence is when you give, when you take away the rights of landlords, they pull out of rental housing. So, and that's kind of a provincial thing, but we have to do what we can to keep it so landlords keep their rental in the rental pool. And I would just tell, tell the youngsters to get a roommate, try to save up part of your income, live with mum and dad as long as you can.
No.
I don't know, I'm not going to say move to Alberta, like the, the ads, but I just...
Don't you think though, it's kind of the catch-22, you want someone to work in a coffee shop?
I know.
So yours, I think the city has a livable wage, I can guess the livable wage is $20, north of $25. I think you get, some cities have a livable wage, hourly wage, so you've got people, an average income is $75,000, right? 30% of your house is supposed to go to your rent or mortgage. Like, when you start putting the numbers on the table, go to the right side. So just curious what your thoughts about that are.
We just have to keep doing what, we have to keep getting creative, keep looking for partnerships. We have to just keep looking for other ways of affordability, childcare that's available, transit-oriented development, affordable recreation programmes, because we don't want people to just spend their whole pay cheque on housing, right? We have to keep doing what we're doing. It's really hard in a market economy though. I mean, I just bought my house and it's ridiculous what it's praised up.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous.
So what is the, the two, you know, tougher questions is like, what, so what is the city doing with this massive growth in towers? Like, it's part of the OCP from a few years ago, but right now, we're going to see towers in Kuaquitlam Centre, and we're going to see Millardville is going to have some tower growth. So what is the city doing to kind of ensure that there's affordability in that mix?
Well, we're advocating for partners. Our housing affordability strategy has been extremely successful. I think in 40 years, no, nobody built rental in Kuaquitlam for 40 years because the federal government and the provincial government, whose mandate is housing, pulled out the different incentive programmes and the, the different programmes that spurred on rental, they pulled out. So that's why we only have really old rental buildings or now brand-new. So we have to keep looking for these partnerships, non-profits, the federal government, the provincial government, keep building market and rental and below-market rental and, or below, yeah, below-market rental and non-market rental. We have to keep getting some of each of these types of housing types in every development, every single one, accessible units for people in our population that need accessible units, units that have no stairs and all that for senior citizens who want to stay living independently. We just have to keep advocating for getting these units in all of these developments. They can't all be market.
Yeah, I guess, I would agree with you, but I guess the other part would be, you know, people talk about supply and demand, which you just, you touched on, but, I mean, demand is, is not just the people who are, you know, my kids living in with me that want a place. It's, it's, you know, it's people migrating here, which is, which is fine, but it's also an investment component to this, right? So what can the city do to kind of temper that the demand or the supply goes to the right demand? You know, the citizens who may have lived here for many years, or is there a way of doing something with, with developers to make sure it's fair and equitable for this, the people coming into this space or...
I don't think we can temper demand. And like I said, I've talked to the Minister of Immigration, because I do a lot of work assisting newcomers and refugees, so I'm quite dialled in to that whole process. And when the 400 and something thousand immigrants come in every year, they basically, the majority of them choose the Greater Toronto Area and the Greater Vancouver Area. Then when they get to Greater Vancouver, they narrow it down and a lot of them come to the Tri-Cities. And that's because, look at it, it's a beautiful place to live. We have transit and mountains and rivers and lakes, and it's beautiful, and we have a strong community spirit. And yes, it's expensive. It's horribly expensive to live in Metro Vancouver, but people are coming, and I don't think we can temper demand. I mean, there's a whole bunch of small towns in Northern BC that hundreds of thousands of people aren't flocking to every month. No offence to those towns, but I don't want to change it so we're not attractive and not livable and people don't want to live here.
Yeah.
So I don't think we can temper, people say, well, quit building things and then people will quit coming. Well, that's not true, they're coming.
Oh yeah, they're coming. I agree with you there, but I guess the way I look at it is, and it's just, I'm seeing it in my, in my world, you know? I've got, we've got people who are volunteered on Tri-Cities Community Television who are selling their house and moving.
Yeah.
We've got, you know, people in my family are moving into the interior. So there's this kind of, I call cashing out mentality, where you, I've sat on my ass for, for 20 years and my house is worth a lot, I could cash out, but, but where are my kids going to go? So it's kind of like, to me, it's like, we're kind of, our communities are changing in not in a legacy sense. It's almost like we're losing that, that sort of institutional knowledge. I'm just curious what you think about that, or am I off my rocker here?
Well, I'd like to talk about something else other than this, because I'm sure, you know, everybody else has talked about this.
Well, some people have brought, no, I think it's kind of, details is, details is the best part, right?
I know, but it's, it's market. I've talked to people who say...
But doesn't it worry you that when you still...
San Francisco, London, New York, Paris, never used to be as expensive as they are.
Yeah.
Vancouver is on the Pacific Rim, it's right on the ocean, it's beautiful, it's landlocked. We have a border, ALR, mountains and ocean, so we have no more land. So we're landlocked and it's, people are coming, so we have to densify and supply and demand. But those cities there that I listed never used to be as expensive as they are, and now nobody blinks when you say, oh, I can't afford to live in San Francisco or London or Paris, because they're world-class cities. And I've heard some demographers say that we're just in the prepubescent stage of becoming the world-class city, and it's, I mean, I hope it doesn't happen where the prices just keep going up, the market. Like I said, my house is now, it's 10 times more than what I paid for it, or seven times more. I only bought it 20 years ago.
Right.
It's ridiculous. But it's the market, there's nobody on earth who can change that, one person. So I'm not going to sit here and say, I'm going to solve that, because it's really complicated. There's no simple solution to a really complicated situation. I hate the fact that it's expensive to live here, but I'm proud of the fact that rather than throwing my hands up or anybody else who's doing all this, throwing their hands up and saying, oh, well, we're on our way to being the next San Francisco. We're trying, we're reaching out for partnerships, we're talking to the feds and the provincial people in charge, we're advocating for more, we're doing what we can to use the land the most effectively that we can, get people alternate transportation options, childcare options. We have got 10,000 units in stream that we, and there was zero before, zero.
The next thing is we're talking about the environment, or I guess, I guess the last few, few weeks or months or years, we've had floods, fires, a whole bunch of stuff has happened. So what's your views on what's going to happen in the, or the city of Kuaquitlam needs to do to address those kind of challenges?
I'm currently the Chair of the Sustainability and Environment Committee, and we meet again next week, and I'm really appreciative of the volunteers that serve on that committee. But I'm proud that the city of Kuaquitlam has, just this year, we approved our environmental sustainability plan, and we acknowledge that climate change is real, we want to mitigate climate change as much as we can, and I'm really, really on board with, again, being solutions-oriented, doing what we can. So I'll just give you a couple of examples. Having all new developments, EV-ready. A lot of people want to buy an electric vehicle, but they live in an older condo and they can't charge it. So any new multifamily for a couple of years now being built, EV-ready, and then more and more chargers are going up all through Kuaquitlam. I want to have more cycling infrastructure. Five years ago, I might not have said that, because I talked to a lot of people who don't want to ride their bikes in Kuaquitlam, because it's too hilly. I run every street, I know how hilly it is. However, there's an advent of e-bikes now. I bought myself an e-bike, I use it to commute from south of Mundy Park to City Hall and back. Chilco, Mariner, they're very hilly, but it's feasible. So I want to make our city safe and accessible with secure storage, so anybody who wants to embrace e-mobility to get out of their car for their errands, do that. Our tree canopy, we normally plant about 5,000 trees every year, we're on track to plant 10,000 this year. And there's more, water conservation and, you know, mitigation for various, getting ready for the heat domes. I'm really proud of all that, and I really looking forward to, if I get re-elected next term. I want it to be as easy as possible and as safe as possible for anybody in our city to embrace the e-mobility options, including e-bikes, e-scooters. We're looking into all sorts of options for people to not have to use their car and then they have options for that first mile, last mile, to and from rapid transit. We're also advocating for green building and lots of other environmental creativities and initiatives that we can do to make our footprint less...
Yeah, because I think the city is going to do a, you guys have a very tight timeline and commitment, so I guess, in a sense, you're going to lead, try to lead the way, I guess.
I really would like, if I get re-elected, I would just love to be a part of all that's ahead in addressing, mitigating climate change, taking action, preserving our environment, getting more trees, more green buildings, less cars.
So, and on the bike side, as I got, you know, my wife has an e-bike and we also walk, but it seems like the, you know, e-bikes are great, but there is some kind of, on some trails, you know, these bikes can hit some very fast paces, so I, I hope that, you know, in Vancouver, we have some segmentation thing. I just, it's almost like we need speed limit on our trails. You, you walk the dike and it's like, you know, the bikes are going 30, 40 clicks. So what's your thoughts on that?
I agree with you. Whenever I use my e-bike, if I'm on the mop, the multi-use pathway, I ring my bell when I'm coming up behind people. And because of all the running I've done and do, it terrifies me when someone comes speeding up behind me at 30. I think e-bikes max out at 32K an hour, but still, that's fast.
You can play with them a bit.
I, I don't know how to do that.
Anyway, I don't know that.
But, but you know, one thing I learned within maybe six months of first getting elected, the number one thing or reason of emails coming into the city, or to me as a councillor, was other residents complaining about the behaviour of other residents. People on e-bikes, speeders, people who've tossed their mattress into the ravine, people who speed, people who rat-run, people who flick their cigarette butts in the, I mean, it's all, the laws are there, the bylaws are there, but it's people complaining about the behaviour of other people. So yes, I'm advocating for e-mobility and e-bikes, and yes, the rules will be put in place, but at the end of the day, we have to all be responsible for our own behaviour and teach our kids to be respectful and responsible. And again, as we get more and more people here, we all have to do our part to live harmoniously and safely.
Well, during COVID, the city did its, get a good job with the ambassadors, so...
Yes.
I mean, it's great to have a law, I mean, but, or a bylaw, but I mean, the sense of using community engagement to kind of raise awareness, I mean, it is, I know the city, the Colony Farms, they have those signs from GBRD, but it's not, it's not common across the whole region. And, and you know, like you know, there's older folks walking those trails, so being clipped by something at 40K is not going to be good for your health. So is there anything else you want to add, I mean, before you have a chance to close here?
I think I just want to say also, Kuaquitlam is a very safe city, but going with safety is the perception of safety. And I'm really disappointed, especially since COVID, at the rise of anti-racism incidents and people in our community who just don't feel safe. There's been a couple of shootings of, you know, gang members. And, you know, even though in reality, Kuaquitlam is, is very safe, the perception might not be there for everybody. So I'm really proud that the city of Kuaquitlam, we heard, we've heard this from the residents, and that's one thing that really keeps me going, is listening to the residents. And so we formed an advisory committee all around community safety, and that's where I'm heading off to you tonight. I'm the vice-chair. And we're, we're listening to residents and different groups out there to try and do what we can to proactively provide a safe... do what we can to proactively provide a safer environment. That's, or, or an actual initiatives, more police on the ground or, you know, I actually, when I came home from a trip, this is slightly different, but when I came home from a trip to the Sunshine Coast, I noticed that there was a whole bunch of publicly accessible automated defibrillators around there. So I talked to our mayor and I said, why don't we have that? And then no word of lie, two weeks later I got an email, we all got an email from St. John's ambulance. Anyways, it's now coming that we're going to have eight or 10 publicly accessible automatic defibrillators put in Coquitlam. And they've been proven to save lives. So that's not quite the same as racism. But I want our citizens to feel safe when they're out in their community, whether it be from speeding bikes or racism accessibility being accepted, or if they have a medical incident. So safety is something that's constantly evolving. We have to listen. And I look forward to continuing to do more of that if I'm re-elected next month.
Well, I want to thank you for coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Time just flies when you're.
It does.
Talking about politics. So that's councillor Terry Towner. She is running for reelection at the city of Coquitlam. If you want to know more about Terry Towner, please reach out to her social media and website. This is Patrick McCarthy, reporting with Tri-Cities Community Television. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.